And would be eligible for the investment tax credit. But there's two different taxes going on here. One's the property tax at the local level, and the other is the income tax of the state.
So there are businesses who are investing in equipment that becomes tax exempt through BETI.
Correct.
And then, in addition to that tax exemption, they are claiming a deduction on the reduced value of the equipment.
They're getting, in a sense, accelerated depreciation, right, with the state level, with the state income tax.
Yeah. For our work session, can you give us a list of who's doing both?
I can give...well, first of all, I can't give you a list. One, because anybody that's taking the bonus depreciation credit, that's confidential tax payer information. Two, we don't know at the local level who's taking advantage of BETI because under BETI, the municipality provides the exemption, and then we reimburse the municipality for the amount of 50 percent of the lost revenue from that exemption.
So if you can't give us who, can you give us how many are doing both?
I don't think we have that information. Under the BETI program, we used to because the state was reimbursing the business directly. But under BETI, it's the municipality. And if a company has multiple locations within the state, they're getting BETI in those multiple locations. So it wouldn't be just the one company. We just don't know that. The other issue is that we estimate about 70 percent of the dollar benefit of the main investment tax credit, as Commissioner Rosen pointed out, will be through pass-through businesses recording on the individual income tax return. So we don't know how many of those individuals that are taking that credit represent one company who made the investment.
Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in addition to not knowing who's taking advantage of this credit, do we have any data on the effectiveness of the credit overall to incentivize businesses to invest in additional equipment and grow their businesses overall?
Well, just to clarify Dr. Allen's response, but I think Maine Revenue certainly knows who's taking advantage of the credit. They don't necessarily have the local BETI information from the community in terms of linking the two together. But they can't reveal, obviously, confidential taxpayer information. I'm sorry, this is the second part of the question.
The question really was, what's the effectiveness? Is this tax credit creating the investment in equipment that we want to see to grow businesses in Maine? There must be some national data on which this program was built and is continued.
I think the basis there would be the utilization. Essentially, as Dr. Allen pointed out, this is an acceleration of the depreciation process. So the investment, invest in equipment, go through a standard depreciation schedule, it'll be incentivized to accelerate. So the assumption would be that if people are participating and utilizing the program, then they see a worthwhile incentive there based on the acceleration or the bonus depreciation. So it would be based on, I would argue, it would be based on the fact that it's being utilized.
Any further questions? Thank you, Commissioner. Once again, those who wish to speak in favor of the bill.
Senator Hanper, Representative Rotundo, members of the Joint Committee on Appropriation and Financial Affairs, Senator McCormick, Representative Good, members of the Taxation Committee. My name is Ben Gilman. I represent the Maine State Chamber of Commerce, a statewide business organization made up of both large and small businesses, here to provide you with our testimony in support of LD 138, Maine's version of the federal depreciation in the form of the Maine Capital Investment Credit. At the federal level, bonus depreciation was scheduled to expire at the end of 2013, but Congress recently extended it to cover 2014. LD 138 continues federal conformity with Maine Tax Code and extends Maine's capital investment credit, which is Maine's proxy for bonus depreciation. The Maine Capital Investment Credit is an economic stimulus measure to encourage companies to invest sooner during slow economic times by allowing companies to take depreciation on equipment faster than they normally would be allowed. This has been an effective tool, and the Maine State Chamber of Commerce supports extending the Maine Capital Investment Tax Credit. Thank you for the time. The Maine State Chamber of Commerce would urge members of the committee to support LD 138. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions with one small caveat that Linda Caprera in our office generally handles taxation issues. She is homesick today, so I am pinching for Linda. So I will try to answer any questions. If I cannot, I will talk to Linda and try to get an answer for you. Thank you for your time.
Questions? Representative Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Gilman. I would ask you the question. If you're stating that it's been effective in Maine, and the chamber sees its effectiveness, on what do you base that opinion?
I think we could try to find some anecdotal information, but I think utilization. I think the tax credit is being used, but you are seeing investment in Maine.
Representative Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here, Mr. Gilman. Sounds like it's not your typical committee or policy area. And I'm not sure if it's anything against your day or for the work session, but when I've dealt with tax credits or tax incentives, I understand the incentivizing behavior and changing behavior. I feel like we either do them to incentivize future behavior or reward behavior. I think I understand the origin of bonus depreciation, but it seems difficult for me to feel like we're incentivizing behavior that already happened in the past year. And that it seems like the most of it, and I don't know how these companies work necessarily, but it seems like it's something that, whether it's conforming bonus depreciation or the credit that comes tied to that in Maine, that the financial benefit of it existing is helping a company that already made a decision to deal with the change in the property that they have. If it went into the future, I think it would make sense to something that would incentivize. But so I feel like the retroactivity makes the incentivizing part more confusing for me.
I'll try to answer in two prongs, and then if I don't get there, then we'll get some information for the work session. But two pieces, I do think, when Commissioner Rosen spoke about Washington and the extenders for 2014, those have come to, you know, to not assume, but, you know, look at Congress and hope that they extend the tax package every year, and they do it late in the game now. They used to do it earlier. So I think that's one piece of it, that some come to expect that. The other piece is, as we heard earlier, is competitiveness with other states in terms of tax conformity and here on the Maine businesses. This tax credit specifically for investment in Maine itself, but if you have other states that aren't conforming, and whether they be businesses here in Maine, but some businesses have locations in other states and all across the country, and they compete internally for work. And I think the signal that it sends when we conform with the investment tax credit sends, you know, a competitiveness signal for the business climate here in the state of Maine. So it is retroactively, but it is looking forward. And when those companies look where they're going to make those investments, they look at these types of decisions that the state's making and which direction they want to go.
Representative Windsor.
Mr. Gilman, so what I'm hearing you say is that if we fail to conform, you will impact future behavior because people will tell that we're not going to conform, so they'll worry just about what they have a standard depreciation schedule.
Yes, that's correct. It will, we believe, will impact future behavior.
And Representative Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just along those same lines about competitiveness and future behavior, if we were to extend this Maine Capital Investment Credit from now forward, which I think is what we're talking about, but exclude only this one retroactive year, do you think that we would have a problem with future behavior and those companies would see that they have the ability to take advantage of this from now on?
I think there would be an issue with that. I mean, if we excluded the last year but extended it going forward, it would be an issue of consistency for the past year. So I think having consistency in the business climate is always beneficial.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Senator Hanper, Representative Rotundo, members of the Appropriations Committee, Senator McCormick, Representative Good, members of the Taxation Committee. My name is Avery Day. I'm an attorney up here at Savwood. Much like Ben, normally John Block covers a lot of the tax issues, but I'm up here today representing the Maine Society CPAs. It's a statewide association of nearly 1,000 CPAs in business education, government, public accounting, and just professional association to help their members succeed professionally. I've been before these joint committees a few times before, as was said earlier. This is sort of an annual affair, and the message has always been pretty short and sweet. The CPAs like conformity, it makes things simpler, not really jumping into the policy behind it, but just the administrative side of things. They are, I won't say always, but generally in favor of conformity and just wanted to speak in support of this bill. And also Senator Libby, I believe it was, if I had good notes, asked about tax preparers and that community and how they're approaching this and making the change. Obviously, a lot of the issues that came up because Congress decided to do what it did, went and did, and there was the delay, I think folks have, in the CPA community and the businesses that they represent, usually make investment decisions sort of in reliance of this, whether that's fair or not, given these conformity bills, these extenders have been extended from time to time, and they sort of expect it. You know, as soon as Congress passed the extenders, we heard from the American, the National CPA Association, you know, they're following that along at the federal level and immediately asking, well, what's going to, what's happening in all the states? What are the states doing? Looking for that feedback, are states going to follow through? So CPAs certainly here in Maine, but the economy national will also be watching this. And with that, I will stop talking. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Day? Thank you very much. Others, what are you wishing to speak for? Okay, those wishing to speak against? Please, Senator Day, the town in front.
Good afternoon. Senator Hanper, Representative Rotundo, Senator McCormick, Representative Good, and members of both committees. My name is Joel Johnson, and I'm an economist at the Maine Center for Economic Policy. And I haven't met a lot of you. The organization where I work, MSEP, the Maine Center for Economic Policy, our mission is to advance public policies that help Maine people prosper in a strong, fair, and sustainable So I'm here to testify today in opposition to one specific provision of LD 138, which is the retroactive extension of the Maine Capital Investment Credit. As you've learned from the Commissioner and Dr. Allen, this credit was enacted in 2011 to place Maine in a sort of state of quasi-conformity with federal bonus depreciation. And the bill in front of you today extends the expiration date on that credit to December 31st, 2014. This, and the reason we're opposed to this is because this is proven to be an ineffective and costly credit that doesn't stimulate the economy, and certainly it won't this time since it's retroactive to purchases that businesses already made last year. Most of the research suggests that bonus depreciation, even under optimal conditions at the federal level, where tax rates are much higher and a tax deduction is worth a lot more as a result, than when you announce it ahead of time and you announce that it's going to be a temporary incentive, even under those optimal conditions, it's been ineffective in changing the capital investment behavior of large businesses, let alone stimulating any knock-on economic activity that results from those investments. And I've included some materials there. There's a paper there from the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities that they wrote last fall ahead of the tax extender bill that Congress took up. Has some good information in there about, they summarize a lot of research, basically, that business analysts on Wall Street and in Congressional Research Service have done about bonus depreciation. And so just for an example, a little tidbit out of there, Bloom, the research arm of Bloomberg, they surveyed a bunch of corporate tax accountants, tax professionals in 2014, and they found that 83 percent of the tax professionals that they surveyed said that the expiration of bonus depreciation at the end of 2013 had no impact on their capital expenditures in And so I think the option here is that today in Maine, offering bonus depreciation retroactively to purchases that were made last year makes no sense at all. Our tax rates are much lower than federal tax rates on these things, so this credit, this sort of quasi-conformity, is worth a lot less than it is at the federal level. And again, it's retroactive. And I just want to address one point that, the whole point of bonus depreciation, again, was kind of in the wake of the recession, it was part of a raft of a bunch of stimulus proposals that Congress put together. Some were directed at workers, you know, unemployment insurance extensions. Some were directed at the safety net. There was increased funding for schools and for Medicaid through the Recovery Act. And a lot of those things have been allowed to sunset. Congress allowed the extension of unemployment insurance benefits to sunset. We just saw in Maine, we have chosen not to reapply for a federal waiver for the three month limit on nutrition assistance. So while we've let recession-era temporary policies that were intended to be temporary expire for workers and for safety net, this business tax break lives on and is extended year after year. And if you extend it year after year, and if in fact that is the business community's expectation, how does it provide any incentive to make more investment now if you know, if you believe that it's going to be available again next year? It doesn't. It was designed to be a temporary policy. It wasn't very effective as a temporary policy, and yet now we're continuing to effectively make it permanent on a year-over-year basis through these kind of ad hoc legislation that Congress puts together and we go conform to it retroactively. It doesn't make any sense. It costs $10 million in the current year, and it doesn't incentivize any behavior. In fact, when, if you were to enact this, it would have already expired at the end of 2014. So I guess, in closing, you know, we think that this is just costly, ineffective, unnecessary tax giveaway to mostly big businesses, mostly multi-state, large businesses that are doing business here in Maine, and we're opposed to it. And I did do some quick looking up online about what other states are doing. Based on my initial look at all the states, about, well, over half of states were not in any kind of conformity with bonus depreciation in 2013. So this is not like something where all the other states are doing it, and we have to do it to remain competitive. It's mostly just the unnecessary tax break that we really can't afford, and we could probably find a lot better things to do with $10 million in the current year.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Representative Windsor.
If you could clarify a couple of, one of your statements. I thought I heard Dr. Allen say, or Commissioner Rosen say, that 70 percent of this goes to past, small businesses that are basically in, you're a subject of RAS or LLC type of business. Those are relatively small, so 70 percent of that $10 million is going back to the little guys. That doesn't seem to mean that the big guy is getting all of it, or at least most of it.
I don't think just because of businesses of tax residency means they're necessarily a small, not a pop business. I think that businesses could organize themselves however they want for the purposes of paying taxes, and there are plenty of large businesses that aren't organized as C corps and do pay through the personal income tax. But, you know, and then, and I'm not sure about the 70 percent. I don't have the information in front of me, but...
When you're the one that said big businesses in Pine, do you have the state corporations get this depreciation?
Yeah, well, I mean, part of this because we, there's another provision in this conformity bill called Section 179 expensing. That's specifically targeted at small businesses. And that one costs a lot less, and the breakdown between businesses that pay through the personal income tax and pay through corporate income tax is even more, is actually the majority pay through the personal income tax. That one is directed at small businesses. It phases out over a certain amount of capital purchases, and then that's when this bonus depreciation kicks in for larger businesses. So, and then, you know, just based on the way that the size of businesses are distributed and how much bigger really big businesses are than small businesses, you could have a handful of large, multi-state, multinational businesses in Maine that account for a really significant portion of this $10 million fiscal note.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to argue. What I was hoping is, is that you could provide me, at some point, I'm not sure if we'll have a work session on this now, but maybe some of my colleagues in the taxation department, in more detail, how you think that the depreciation schedule works. You know, it seems to me an accelerated depreciation program front loads depreciation, and so that in the subsequent years, you derive more revenue from those corporations or entities that made that investment. And I could be all wrong, but if I am, what I, my question is, could you give me that better information than I'm hearing right now? I'm hearing two things, and probably the truth is somewhere in the middle, but if you could help me in any way, I appreciate it.
Representative, I'm not entirely clear what you're asking. Can you clarify?
Okay, I guess I'm hearing, I'm hearing one thing from the revenue services, and I'm hearing something from you that's a lot different to me. And I guess I'm really trying to understand the impact of this, other than, other than where we may be sending mixed signals to our investment communities by not conforming. But I'm trying to understand the practical application of this. You're saying it's weighted to very expensive, very large corporations, and my other guy is saying, gee, no, I don't think so. It seems to be key to small businesses. And so if you could help, from your point of view, provide information. I'm sure that the other side would be happy to provide this information as well.
Well, as Dr. Allen said, you know, I don't have access to tax returns. I can't give you a specific breakdown of what businesses and their size are benefiting from this. But what I'm saying is, the basis for my statement that this mostly benefits large businesses is based on the design of the credit or the design of the bonus depreciation deduction and the way that is layered on top of the Section 179 expensing in such a way that the Section 179 is targeted to small businesses, and then as your businesses, as businesses are big enough to phase out of that benefit, they then are eligible for bonus depreciation. That's the basis for my statement about the, about this being mostly a benefit for large businesses. I don't have, again, the specific information from confidential tax returns, so that would be a question for Maine Revenue Services.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Senator Kees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson, thanks for being here and for your presentation. Going forward from January 1, 2015, I think you made margins that you got to think about about whether you want to continue this support or not. But it's my understanding that in December 2011, December 2012, and December 2013, there are lots, Congress every year extended these things. And I've heard some suggestions that the Maine business community has come to expect the dysfunction of Congress and therefore expect that this would happen each year. And in wanting to keep a predictable business environment in the state, wouldn't it be sending a long message in your view if we disappointed that recent expectation, at least for calendar year 2014?
Well, I disagree with that. I think, you know, again, the way that this bonus depreciation deduction was designed, the way that it was ramped up, it was a, right now we're debating whether it's going to be 50 percent at the federal level, and that's what Congress passed. It was 100 percent in 2011. It was, you could expense the full cost of purchase in the first year. And I think the, again, the rationale for that was that whatever boost that this credit would provide in terms of investment, you know, spurring investment and economic growth would be precisely because of this temporary nature, that, oh, this is a one-time deal. This is a temporary thing, it's like Catch for Plunkers. Remember that? Where it was like, there was a deadline, or you could turn it in your car and get that, and you know, that was pretty ineffective, too. And so I guess what I'm saying is, when this just becomes an expectation that it's going to be renewed every year, it loses whatever little sort of stimulating effect that it had because there's no, because it's like, well, I don't, why should I buy that equipment now? I'm going to be able, the bonus appreciation will be available next year, too. And, you know, I think if you look at some of the research, I passed around that paper, but, you know, some of the research that I've read, when researchers interview corporate tax professionals or executives, you know, they say that this thing is fine, we'll take it, but if you want to make a permanent tax break, then this is really not the way to do it, to just keep renewing this thing every year. We'd have, we'd rather have lower rates, you know, than this sort of ad hoc every year, well, we don't know if they're going to extend it, then they do or not. And part of the reason, too, is because in the corporate accounting rules and in government accounting rules, too, they don't account for the time value of money. So, yeah, like, over the life of the equipment, the tax break is the same because you, eventually you depreciate the whole cost of the equipment, it's just when you get it. And obviously, a dollar today is better than a dollar tomorrow. But, but that's not reflected in any of these corporations' books, so they can take bonus depreciation, but it actually doesn't make their bottom line look any better in terms of, to investors or things like that. So I guess it just doesn't make sense to me that, and I'm not alone, you know, I'll take my word for it, but I passed around also a editorial from the Washington Post, and there's plenty of other, again, research out there, but that it just doesn't make sense for this thing that was designed to be a temporary thing to just keep extending it year after year. And then, like I said, meanwhile, it kind of shows, in my view, some misplaced priorities if that's the thing that we're, that's the recession-era policy that we're extending year after year, and meanwhile, we let, you know, unemployment insurance extensions to the safety net fall by the wayside because the recession's over now. You know, so it doesn't make sense fiscally for the state this year. It doesn't make sense in terms of promoting investment. It doesn't make sense for competitiveness. There's really no reason to do this other than to just give $10 million to businesses that made investments last year and that they would have made anyway.
Representative Timberlake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question is, is what do you determine is a large business, and what do you determine is a small business, and where do you draw that line?
I don't have a line that I can explain.
Is it, is it a business that does $100,000 a year, $10,000 a year?
No, those are, those are small businesses.
Okay. So if a million, a business does a million dollars a year, is that a small business?
Yeah.
And does he qualify for this tax credit?
Not that I'm aware of. I think if you look at the Section 179, again, for the purpose of this conversation, to answer your question, I'm defining small business versus large business as are you eligible for the Section 179 expensing, which is the sister policy to the bonus depreciation? And it's defined in the rules of that tax deduction, the Section 179 deduction. I think it's, if you have, if your, if your annual revenue is two, or it's, you basically, you get a maximum, you get to expense in the first year completely 100... you get a maximum, you get to expense in the first year completely 100% the cost of capital purchases that are eligible, up to a max of $500,000 worth of capital investments in one year. So I guess for the purposes of this discussion, that's kind of where I draw the line between a small and a large business. Are you spending, are you making more than $500,000 per year in eligible equipment investments? So, I mean, $500,000 a year, I don't know, that's like 10 trucks or something?
Or could be, or could be one, one dog incinerator, because I got a situation in my town that I don't bought one last year under this proposal and he bought it just ahead of time so that he made sure it'd be qualified. And he's, I consider him a small business, he's himself and two sons and a couple of employees.
Sure.
And that, and he qualified. I think he's maybe around a million dollars, maybe a little less than a million dollars, but he bought one, so he qualified for this.
Sure.
I can think of another business probably within my own district that has probably done the same thing that I would not call a large business, that has made this with the anticipation, he's going to get the federal part, that with anticipation that he'd get the state part. And these guys don't have to do business in the state of Maine, they can go to this somewhere else. So I think in consistency, I would think that we'd want it, but I don't understand where it comes from, but I don't have to, so.
Further questions?
Representative Timberlake. I'd just like to follow up on Representative Timberlake's observation and get a sense of a little bit more clearly again. So, of the distinction between which businesses are going to be using Section 179 expensing and which businesses are going to be using the decoupled investment credit tax. So businesses who have spent up to a half million dollars on eligible equipment, not just a half million dollars in income, which I can add, a million dollars in expenses on equipment, are eligible for the 179. Am I understanding this correctly?
That's, yeah, we're getting to the limit of my understanding of the law, but as far as I know, that's the limit. Now, there are also some things, there are also some provisions in these credits with both the 179 and the bonus depreciation that are, that define what types of capital investments are eligible. And that's where, for me, I would have to get back to you and, because that sort of gets to the limit of my understanding. And it may be, for example, in Representative Timberlake's example, that the equipment that, that the person that you know, the business person that you know purchased, maybe that wasn't eligible for the 179 expensing, but it was eligible for the bonus depreciation because of the, sort of the way they define eligible purchases. I'm not sure. That might be one explanation, like, for, for, for the confusion. But they have different rules, but again, in terms of, the Section 179 is strictly only available, it has, it has a limit and it phases out for, for large businesses. And then at that point, the bonus depreciation is, comes into play.
Senator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just had a question on one of the things that you stated in your testimony. You said that in the case of bonus depreciation, Maine had always technically been decoupled from the federal law, but beginning in 2011, we started to conform?
Yes.
So if I made that statement correctly, saying before 2011?
Yes.
We did not conform to federal law on bonus depreciation or was there no bonus depreciation?
There was, there was bonus depreciation. It started in, the Bush administration started at the federal level in 2011, you know, as, again, as the economic stimulus measure. It sort of faded out, it sort of faded out. It wasn't available for a few years there in the late, in the mid to late 2000s. And then, you know, in the wake of the Great Recession, Congress grabbed it as, again, as a big package of sort of policies designed to stimulate the economy and revived it. And now, to answer your question, my, the, my understanding was that we were decoupled all the way from the, in section of bonus depreciation at the federal level until 2011, when we put in this credit and did the quasi-conformity. But from what I heard earlier from Mike Allen, who I would defer to his expertise on it, there was maybe a couple of years at the very beginning when we, when we did conform. So that would, that's different than what my testimony says.
Okay. Maybe it would be helpful if either you or Dr. Allen gave us the years going back when this bonus depreciation started, whether or not we conformed or decoupled from that, because the theme seemed to have been today is that this is a routine bill that comes before us every year and we just vote to conform. And I'm just curious on the conformity, whether or not this is something we've just been doing since 2011 or has this been a long time rubber stamp that we just conform to the federal level? So if somebody could give me the history of that, I would appreciate it.
Anything more questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak against?
Good afternoon, Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, Senator McCormick, Representative Good, and members of the appropriations and taxation committees. My name is Ben Chin. I'm the political director of Maine People's Alliance. It's a real pleasure to be before you for the first time and I'm sure this will not be the last. So really looking forward to working together this year and hope we can be supporter of the.